Welcome to the State Energy Planning Board meeting. I'm Doreen Harris, Chair of the State Energy Planning Board and President and CEO of the New York State Energy Research and Development Authority. As a reminder, today's meeting is open to the public to observe, both in person here in Albany and on our live stream. Thank you to everyone who came here in person today and to those who tuned in online. Before turning to our agenda, I'd like to welcome the members of the State Energy Planning Board and their designees. I ask that each board member or delegate introduce themselves, going around the table. Please share your name, title, and agency.
Thank you. Rory Christian, Chair of the Public Service Commission, CEO of the Department of Public Service.
Kevin Malone, New York State Department of Health, here representing State Health Commissioner Jim McDonald.
Hello. I'm Lisa Sanz Yavon, Deputy Secretary of State at the New York Department of State. I'm here representing Secretary of State Walter Mosley.
Hello, I'm Yvonne Martinez. I am the Deputy Commissioner for Policy Strategy and Research from the Department of Labor. I'm here representing Commissioner Roberta Riordan.
Elizabeth Walters, Deputy Commissioner of Department of Ag and Markets, representing Commissioner Ball. Excuse me.
Good afternoon.
Colleen Smith-Willen from the New York State Department of Transportation, representing Commissioner Dominguez from New York State Department of Transportation. Thank you.
Hi, Amanda Leffler, Commissioner of the Department of Environmental Conservation.
Hi, David Whipple, Senior Director, Industry Development at Empire State Development, here on behalf of Commissioner Hope Knight.
Patricia Hannah, Legislative Director for Assembly Member DeeDee Barrett, here on her behalf.
Carter Strickland, Chief Sustainability Officer at SUNY, here on behalf of Chancellor John B. King Jr.
Robin Fitzgerald, Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services. I am the Chief of Staff. I'm here on behalf of Commissioner Bray.
Emily Nelson, New York ISO. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Rich Dewey.
Thank you all. For the record, I note we have a quorum for today's meeting, and I will now turn to today's business. Please note for the record that an agenda was shared with board members and posted on the Energy Plan website for the public to review on Monday, November 3rd. Our agenda for today will include the following. Next slide, please. Reviewing and approving the minutes of the July 23, 2025 Board Meeting, discussing public comments on the draft Energy Plan, and any other business followed by next steps. Before we turn to our full agenda, I'd like to share some updates since we last met. Next slide. Over the course of this year, New York has successfully facilitated the release of dozens of federal energy grants that support clean transportation and housing initiatives across the state, including the National Electric Vehicle Initiative and the Home Energy Rebates Program. Next slide, please. Just last month, New York Attorney General Letitia James joined a coalition of plaintiffs in filing two lawsuits to protect billions of dollars of funding for affordable solar programs. This is to address the EPA's illegal termination of the Solar for All program that rescinded billions of dollars already issued to states to fund low-cost home solar programs. This follows a victory in September in a lawsuit also led by Attorney General James and comprised of 18 other attorneys general and two governors to protect the federal state energy office funding. The U.S. District Court found that the U.S. Department of Energy's attempt to cap state energy program funding is illegal, and we will continue to support state litigation to enable all New Yorkers to access funds that have been obligated to New York State. Already, a new report from Climate Power estimates that more than 6,200 jobs and $2.5 billion in clean energy investments have been lost or delayed in New York in 2025 alone due to Trump administration's energy policies. So certainly, as this board has discussed, we've seen many years of strong energy growth or strong job growth associated with our clean energy sector. This finding is in stark contrast, certainly, to that growth. So as you can see, the state remains committed to growing our economy even in the face of federal rollbacks. Next slide. In September, Governor Hochul announced the next step for the $1 billion Sustainable Future Program to accelerate climate investment statewide. This historic investment will create good-paying jobs, lower energy costs for New Yorkers, and slash harmful emissions in the face of federal rollbacks. This program will fund a wide variety of clean energy and climate programming, including $50 million to Empower Plus to support no-cost home energy upgrades for low- and moderate-income homes, $50 million for clean green schools, and $350 million for other building decarbonization investments, including thermal energy networks on SUNY campuses. This program also supports $250 million for emissions-free buses, EV charging, and related clean transportation investments, $200 million to support utility-scale renewable generation projects developed by the New York Power Authority. And collectively, this billion-dollar fund is the largest climate investment in New York's budget history, and it works to ensure an affordable, energy-efficient transition for all New Yorkers. Next slide. In September, the governor directed state agencies to intensify our efforts to advance shovel-ready renewable energy projects with a focus on qualifying projects that will seek to access expiring federal tax credits soon set to expire. So we together, both members of this board and beyond, are working to streamline permitting, interconnection, financing, and contracting processes to ensure that as many projects as possible reach construction quickly for New York homes and businesses. Certainly relatedly, NYSERTA this fall launched our 2025 land-based renewable energy solicitation for large-scale wind, solar, and other renewable energy projects, really designed to advance late-stage projects ready to commence construction. We see this supporting not only over $5 billion in clean energy investments but also more than $2,500 in-state family-sustaining jobs. Next slide. Also last week, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation announced the agency's approval of required permits for the proposed Northeast Supply Enhancement Pipeline Project. As stated, DEC remains committed to closely monitoring the project's construction and adherence to all permit conditions to ensure the full protection of New York's waterways. The approval of these permits follows recent orders issued by both the New York Public Service Commission and the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission that found there is a reliability need for the proposed NESI pipeline. The NESI project is certainly designed to support reliability, ease interstate pipeline constraints, and reduce the risk of interruptions to gas supply to the downstate region. I will also note that in addition, the Constitution Pipeline Company withdrew its application for DEC permits for its proposed pipeline project. Next slide. NYSERTA, Empire State Development, the New York Power Authority, the Department of Public Service, and the New York State Department of Labor together hosted the Advanced Nuclear Summit in Syracuse, bringing together policymakers, industry, academia, labor, and advocates to provide clear, actionable frameworks for how advanced nuclear can contribute to New York's energy future. Following the summit, NIPA released two requests for information in support of the governor's directive to develop 1 gigawatt of new advanced nuclear generation. The first invites nuclear developers and other relevant stakeholders to propose project concepts and business models with the objective of achieving commercial operation no later than 2040, and the second focuses on communities, regions, counties, municipalities, and other organizations working to identify potential sites with demonstrated local support. Responses are requested by December 11, 2025. SUNY also launched its Strategic Research Investment, or STRIVE, Climate and Sustainability Research Task Force, convening academics and other stakeholders across eight working groups with topics ranging from climate science modeling, climate mitigation and resilience strategies, and economic impacts and social impact considerations. This task force will help SUNY's blueprint for energized and scaled research and innovation, supporting New York's objective to remain a leader in advancing the clean energy future. The final report is expected in May. And relatedly, the New York State Public Service Commission approved NYSERTA's 2026 through 2030 Innovation and Research Portfolio, supporting the innovation needed to drive the next generation of technologies that will move us toward our clean energy goals while ensuring safe, reliable, and affordable service. The PSC also released revised Rapid Act regulations for public comment. The Renewable Action Through Public Interconnection and Deployment Act, or Rapid Act, is designed to refine permitting practices to better facilitate the development of new renewable generation in the state. These revised regulations incorporate thousands of public comments received in the previous comment period. Commission will accept comments on the revised regulations until December 8, 2025. Next slide. Also this quarter, NYSERTA published its techno-economic assessment report in support of the Public Service Commission's 0x40 proceeding. The proceeding follows the PSC's 2023 order to identify technologies that can support both grid reliability needs and a zero-emission electricity system by 2040. This assessment details a comprehensive evaluation of various dispatchable emissions-free resources that could contribute to both grid reliability and decarbonization, certainly a valuable resource both for this proceeding, for the State Energy Planning Board, and for the state as we move forward. We also saw reports from the New York State Independent System Operator, the NISO, its short-term assessment on reliability report, and also through the Comprehensive Reliability Plan. Jointly, the studies point to shrinking margins and potential future reliability needs. As we've discussed before, the Energy Plan fundamentally aligns with the NISO findings that New York must invest in its aging power infrastructure to meet rising electric demand, and certainly the 15-year pathways analysis before us as the State Energy Planning Board can help guide these investments while necessarily factoring in the headwinds we face from federal government actions. Today, as we see at our board, we are joined by Emily Nelson, Executive Vice President and Chief Operating Officer at the New York Independent System Operator. Emily, I'll turn to you to speak to the findings from the report and how they are relevant to the state energy planning process.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to address the board and audience members. As mentioned, the ISO takes seriously the opportunity to provide planning studies, and this particular fall, we were able to complete not only a short-term assessment of reliability but also a review of the Comprehensive Reliability Plan of the grid looking out from 2026 through 2032. Within that body of work, we've identified several risk factors associated with the long-term reliability of the grid. First, we see concerns regarding the demand projections and the potential impact associated with higher growth rates of demand and electrification. There is risk associated with additional generation deactivations. An area that we are reviewing is the aging generation fleet, and with that age, we see greater risk associated with unplanned outages and possibly the exit of resources that are currently necessary to provide reliability. We also evaluate the risk of extreme weather, and certainly, we're seeing stressed conditions on the grid such as experienced this year in the summer of 2025 where conditions exceeded our normal projections, our baseline projections that we typically plan for. The other area that certainly we are tracking very closely and is important for continued reliability is that the projects that we are currently planning to enter, enter timely. And so that encompasses both transmission investment that is underway in New York as well as supply-side investment. Beyond the longer-term Comprehensive Reliability Plan, there is also reference to the short-term assessment that's looking out at a five-year timeframe, and within that body of work, we are identifying reliability needs. The NISO has a process where we evaluate if there are needs that are necessary to address in order to continue to have a reliable plan. We solicit solutions. That's what we are currently underway, trying to identify if there are solutions to manage some of the deactivations that we are responsible for evaluating. And ultimately, we will bring together that assessment of solutions to see if there's any viable opportunities to meet those needs, and to the extent that we need to retain deactivating resources to continue to provide a reliable grid, we also have some authority to do that. So that is a quick view of the reliability assessments underway in the New York ISO. These studies are completed on a routine basis, so we continually refresh our view of all of these factors and these risk factors to bring the best information possible forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. And as noted, I think it's very important to reflect on the fact that this energy plan and certainly the scenarios that we have been advancing roughly and generally do align with the NISO's findings, thus really creating a future in which we are planning against a common understanding of not only the uncertainties but the needs for the near, mid, and longer term. So thank you, Emily. We look forward to continuing to work together as we finalize the plan. And of course, just lastly, DEC just last week announced that they had finalized an agreement with the Greenage Natural Gas Generation Plant in Dresden. The agreement requires the plant to drastically reduce its currently permitted greenhouse gas emissions over the course of a five-year renewal of its Title V air permit. This agreement resolves pending litigation and secures a significant cut in greenhouse gas emissions that would otherwise be subject to an uncertain judicial outcome. Thank you for accommodating my report. And when we turn to the next slide, the next item on the agenda today is to accept the meeting minutes of the State Energy Planning Board meeting held on July 23, 2025. These minutes were updated following circulation to reflect all members in attendance. Are there any comments on the minutes? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes into the record and post them on the website. Do I have a second?
Second.
All members in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The minutes are accepted into the record. Next slide. Now we will transition to our main agenda item, what we have heard from public engagement on the draft Energy Plan. The last few months were a busy time for the State Energy Planning Board and state staff as we invited public input on the draft plan from July 23 through October 6. In August and September, we held seven in-person hearings across the state and three virtual hearings. Over 1,000 people attended and nearly 450 spoke at those hearings. We even extended some hearings due to high turnout and the need to ensure we heard from everyone at the hearings. We also received nearly 15,000 written comments on the draft plan from advocates, business, labor, and other groups, as well as individuals across the state. In addition to holding public hearings and soliciting written comments, we conducted tailored outreach to organizations working in disadvantaged communities, to indigenous nations, all resulting in fruitful discussions about potential ways to collaborate around energy priorities. This was a highly informative process, and the board is thankful to all New Yorkers who are engaged in energy planning in New York State, and I to each of you for attending so many of the hearings with me around our state as well. So with that process concluded, I will now pass the mic to Carl Moss, Senior Vice President for Policy Analysis and Research at NYSERTA, to walk us through the central themes that emerged from these public comments, certainly how these comments will be incorporated into the plan, and of course, our next steps. So Carl, please take it away. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Chair Harris, and it's a pleasure to be here with the board again. So I will begin with an overview of the nearly 15,000 written comments that we received. I'll then summarize cross-cutting comments and related staff recommendations really aligned with the board's key planning goals. At that point, I'll pause and we'll take an opportunity to see if the board has any comments or questions, and then we'll proceed with our staff presentations, which I will join. We'll focus on comments for each of the planned key topics that received the greatest attention from the public, so that included electricity, nuclear energy, natural gas, buildings, and energy jobs. And then I will conclude by speaking to some comments on the planning process itself. I'll speak to the pathways analysis and then our next steps. Our summaries reflect upon the received comments that came through many channels, as Chair Harris mentioned, both hearings and written comment, as well as some of the tailored outreach that we performed. This presentation and its appendix, which includes comments on each planned chapter, will be posted after this meeting. Next slide, please. So I'll start by sharing some descriptive data on the nearly 15,000 written comments that the Energy Planning Board received. 99% of written comments received were from individuals, and most of these comments came through 13 comment campaigns, as shown on this slide. We received many written comments from labor and environmental advocates. As you recall from the hearings, we heard some of these same voices. We also received many comments through a campaign organized by the heating fuel industry. In addition, we heard from supporters of nuclear power, of distributed solar and storage, and of farmer-produced bioenergy. A summary of the key messages from each of these comment campaigns shown on this slide is available for review. Roughly 3,000 individuals provided comments unconnected to the campaigns noted here. Among these New Yorkers having access to fuel choice and concern about rising energy bills were the top messages. Next slide. We also received over 250 comments from organizations. As shown here, these organizations ranged widely in type, with the most comments coming from members of the energy industry, nonprofits and advocates, and trade organizations. Next slide. So I'll now move on to share a thematic summary of comments, starting with our cross-cutting themes. Next slide. We organized cross-cutting comments themes around the broad planning goals included in the draft State Energy Plan. As a reminder, on this slide, you'll see we have these five key goals. The first is delivering abundant, reliable, resilient clean energy. Second is to provide affordable energy to households and equitable clean energy benefits. Third is to support economic growth and competitiveness. The fourth is to advance innovation, and the fifth is to continue progress towards decarbonization and a clean energy economy. Next slide. On the first goal, we heard a diversity of views from commenters on the energy mix that the state should pursue. Many commenters framed their comments in terms of reliability and affordability and supported both clean and fossil fuels for these reasons. Typically, these commenters voiced support for natural gas, renewables, nuclear energy, delivered and alternative fuels, and thermal energy networks. Some commenters leaned further into fossil fuels, especially natural gas, and framed their position in terms of not only reliability and affordability but also consumer choice. Other commenters pointed to reliability and affordability plus the need for climate action to advocate for further development of renewables and energy storage, in addition to the efficient use of energy. Commenters broadly agreed that New York State's electric grid requires further investment in modernization to bolster the transmission-distribution systems and reliably meet growing power demands, as we heard earlier today. Commenters disagreed on whether to build new gas generation infrastructure with strong positions for and against new gas pipelines. Next slide. Similarly, commenters disagreed on the course of action for combustion generation units, which most often run on natural gas today. Some supported retaining, repowering, and developing new combustion units. Others urged the state to work towards closing fossil fuel peaker plants. We heard a range of views on solar and wind development, energy storage, and electrification as well. Some commenters strongly supported the accelerated deployment of these clean energy technologies. Others raised concerns, most commonly related to solar siting, battery safety, and the state's ability to deploy in the new federal environment. Alternative views also received differing perspectives, with many commenters appreciating the benefits but differing on the scope of end uses. Some supported widespread use, and others urged for limited use in hard-to-electrify applications. Nuclear energy was also contentious, and will be explored further in coming slides from staff. Next slide. So now I'll turn to some of the staff recommendations. Based on these comments, staff recommend maintaining the plan's approach of supporting an abundant, diverse mix of energy sources and associated infrastructure. This is needed for the state's energy system to reliably meet demand at reasonable costs. Staff recommend providing more context and reliability indicators in planning processes in the plan. Staff also recommend the plan not take a position on specific energy infrastructure projects. In response to concerns regarding renewables and storage, staff note that the plan speaks to strategies for developing and citing energy resources in ways that reduce energy project risks, minimize land use conflicts, and benefit host communities. Staff can incorporate more context on these points in the plan. Finally, staff recommend updating the plan's energy pathways analysis scenarios to account for the latest federal and state policies, and I'll speak a little bit more to that later. Next slide. On the plan's second goal of furthering energy affordability and the equitable distribution of clean energy benefits, many commenters were broadly concerned about energy affordability. Many individuals pointed to their increasing energy bills and argued that continued access to gas is needed to maintain affordability. Others argued the opposite, that affordability can be furthered through additional renewable deployment and limiting new gas infrastructure. Commenters also provided feedback on the cost impacts of clean energy and affordability programs, with some calling for them to be shifted to non-ratepayer funding sources. Another strong concern was the degree to which energy affordability in low- and moderate-income households are prioritized. Commenters called for greater attention to the form of increased program funding, reaching more eligible households, additional consumer protections, and further research. Next slide. On energy equity, received many proposals on how the state could engage in direct benefits towards communities, especially disadvantaged communities. This included recommendations on the process by which communities and the state engage and collaborate, as well as how community organizations are involved in program design and policy development. Commenters also called attention to the state's engagement with other governments, including indigenous nations. Commenters called for proactive, meaningful government-to-government consultation and collaboration with indigenous nations. Several local governments stress the importance of home rule and coordination between local and state government. Next slide. So pivoting to staff recommendations, in response to these comments, staff recommend increasing the plan's emphasis on energy affordability with expanded context on current energy costs and how energy insecurity impacts New Yorkers. Importantly, the plan speaks to being strategic about the needed investments in New York's energy system to avoid overbuilding and excess costs. Again, staff will add emphasis here. Staff also will expand the energy affordability impacts analysis to include sensitivities that explore faster growth in retail prices. And we propose considering areas for further research and analysis, including on policy options to advance energy affordability and to inform the biannual update to the State Energy Plan, and I'll speak to that update a little bit more later. Staff also recommend adding context on how clean energy choices could help manage energy costs for households and businesses. This includes technologies that support flexible building loads and manage EV charging. Harnessing Harnessing this demand flexibility, as we've said many times, can save consumers money, prevent overbuilding of great infrastructure, and support our reliable electric system. Similarly, the plan emphasizes the multiple benefits of energy efficiency. The plan also describes how public transportation offers an affordable alternative. Commenters recognize this and called for the plan to prioritize public transit and support more transit options in rural communities. In response, staff proposed to add further discussion on rural transit providers, as well as options like microtransit. Next slide. Staff recommend expanding engagement with the goal of delivering equitable clean energy benefits. Specific to Indigenous nations, staff recommend that the plan speak to government-to-government consultation with Indigenous-led organizations and sovereign nations themselves, and also that we need to recognize more clearly how the state's definition of disadvantaged community includes Indigenous nations. Specific to host communities for energy projects, including the municipal governments, staff proposed adding a recommendation to conduct research on best practices for supporting host community benefits. Staff also recommend adding detail in the plan and ways to support energy sector procurement for minority and women-owned business enterprises and service-disabled veteran-owned businesses. Next slide. Our third and fourth goals of furthering economic competitiveness and innovation, business and industry stakeholders stress the importance of energy availability, reliability, and affordability. We also heard strong concerns from a wide range of stakeholders about the cost impacts of energy investments and supply needs to support data centers. Many commenters called for guardrails and tailored policies to protect ratepayers and to minimize emissions. On innovation, we heard general support for continued state investment into RD&amp;D and the commercialization of new and emerging energy technologies, as well as some calls for the state to broaden its focus to a wider set of clean, firm technologies. Next slide. So based on these comments, staff recommend maintaining the plan's emphasis on access to reliable and affordable energy with greater attention to business energy costs. Staff also recommend paying greater attention to data centers in the plan, while noting that the state's current interconnection rules are designed to protect ratepayers from the upgrade costs typically associated with such data centers. Staff also proposed to add a recommendation for the state to consider additional tools to minimize potential system costs for new large energy users. On innovation, staff notes the plan is consistent with comments received and lays out a path for the state's energy innovation ecosystems to drive RD&amp;D and commercialization of novel solutions across a wide set of technologies. Next slide. So turning to our fifth and final goal, making progress towards decarbonization and a clean energy economy. Many commenters urged the state to commit to Climate Act targets and incorporate additional scoping plan recommendations. Some commenters held different views and requested reevaluating or rolling back the Climate Act. We also heard many calls for the state to implement market-based policy mechanisms, such as CAP and Invest, which is also known as the Clean Air Initiative, or a clean transportation standard. Commenters often framed their comments within the context of negative impacts from federal policies. In response, some urged state-led progress, whereas others called for tempered expectations. Next slide. Relevant to these comments, the plan's summary for policymakers, which is Section 452, for those who are following along at home, identifies potential additional policy actions towards decarbonization. It speaks to the potential actions requested by commenters and recognizes the need to continue evaluating their costs, benefits, implications, and potential design options. Next slide. So that concludes our very quick summary of the cross-sectoral comments. We'll next shift to the comments on select topics, starting with the electric sector. However, before moving to those select topics, I do want to pause and see if there are any further comments or questions from the board. Okay, hearing none. I will move on to the next part of the presentation. It's my pleasure to introduce the agency staff panel, who will speak to the comments received on topical chapters in the plan. We suggest further comments and questions from the board come at the end of the full panel. So first, Jessica Waldorf, Chief of Staff and Director of Policy Implementation at Department of Public Service, will speak to electricity, followed by Rob Haberman, Senior Advisor for Policy Implementation at Department of Public Service. He will address the nuclear energy chapter. Third, Seth Berkman, Senior Project Manager at NYSERTA, will speak to natural gas. And finally, Leslie Green, also a Senior Project Manager at NYSERTA, will speak to the buildings chapter. So with pleasure, I'll now pass the mic to Jessica Waldorf.
Got it. Good afternoon, members of the State Energy Planning Board, and thank you for the opportunity to present today. Next slide, please. I think we're a few behind. So first few slides here are going to provide an overview of some of the summary themes from the electric chapter. It is one of the longest chapters in the state energy plan, and there certainly is a lot to it, and we received a lot of comments. Starting with the first slide, many commenters raised concerns about energy affordability and the need for the state to have this as a primary focus in our energy planning efforts, as well as the work that we're doing to, you know, invest and plan for the future of our energy systems, both electricity, but also on the natural gas side as well. Commenters raised support for continued progress towards the state's Climate Act targets, and noted the need for streamlined permitting, interconnection, and siting efforts, both generally and for specific resources. Some commenters also called on a greater role for the New York Power Authority in the deployment of clean energy resources, not just generation, but also transmission system investments. And with that, we can go to the next slide. Under the theme of grid reliability, modernization, and planning, commenters called on the state to focus on modernizing and updating the electric grid and continued improvements to overall grid planning efforts. There were requests to increase the plan's focus on the transmission and distribution system to maximize the existing fleet of generation resources and system efficiency, rather than a strict focus just on bringing more supply to the grid. Some commenters raised support for integrated electric and gas system planning efforts. And commenters also raised concerns with the reliability impacts of intermittent resources. There were strong concerns regarding the impacts of new large loads coming onto the electric grid, and calls from many commenters to make sure that ratepayers are protected from those new projects entering the electric grid. There were also some strong and differing positions on the role of fossil fuel-fired generation facilities, and there were calls for some support for retaining, repowering, and/or developing combustion generation units specifically for reliability purposes until there are other firm alternatives in place. And lastly, there was also comments from several commenters that placed a greater emphasis on the need to close existing fossil fuel-fired power plants, specifically the peaker units in New York City. Next slide, please. This is the last slide on themes, and starting with offshore wind, there was a lot of comments and support for continued progress towards the state's nine-gigawatt offshore wind target. On distributed solar, there were calls for improved compensation for these resources, both through the marginal cost of service rules, through the Public Service Commission, as well as the value of distributed energy resources, or VETER tariff. This tariff compensates resources like solar and energy storage on the distributed side through a methodology that provides value both for their energy capacity and environmental attributes. Some commenters also called on the state to increase the state's distributed solar target to 20 gigawatts by 2035. On energy storage, commenters asked for the state to ensure that energy storage resources are integrated into electric grid planning and operations. There were also calls for support for long-duration energy storage, a reassessment of current utility tariff provisions, and an increased battery storage target, energy storage target, and update to the state's energy storage roadmap. Lastly, on the demand response and flexible resource side, commenters suggested that the state develop a plan to holistically evaluate current demand response programs to maximize the opportunities demand response can bring to the grid in reducing operating costs and delivering savings to consumers. Commenters also suggested that an opt-out approach versus an opt-in model, which is what most of the programs are based on today, would increase program participation and deliver overall grid benefits. And next slide, please. So the next couple of slides are going to provide an overview of some of the changes that the staff team made to respond to these comments. And first, I'll note that we placed a stronger emphasis on energy affordability all throughout the chapter. We added a key finding to the beginning that recognizes that rising electricity and overall energy costs are creating energy affordability concerns that must be addressed. We emphasize the need for investments in our energy systems to be selected, designed, and executed in a cost-effective manner in order to mitigate utility bill impacts and to withstand the impacts of a changing climate. We added language that recognizes the need for a diverse mix of energy resources to meet the state's current and growing electricity demand needs. And specifically, we updated one of the key findings to emphasize how the state is supporting energy diversity, leading the deployment of clean energy resources, and taking the necessary steps to meet demand and preserve reliability and affordability. We also added text on the recently published Zero by Forty techno-economic assessment that was mentioned earlier, which evaluates seven candidate dispatchable emissions-free or clean firm resources, and how those resources can help to reduce the potential gap between the electricity demand and supply in 2040 and beyond. Next, there were significant revisions to expand on system reliability, grid modernization, and electric system planning. Specifically, staff made edits to clarify how New York's current electric grid performs relative to the rest of the United States, and that we have a high level of current reliability that we continue to maintain. We noted that New York outperforms the national average in neighboring states on key reliability metrics for electric utility customers, and specifically, how New Yorkers have experienced the second-fewest power outages and the ninth-fewest outage minutes in 2023 on average across all states in the United States. Next, we made updates to reliability needs based on the most New York Independent System Operator Short Term Assessment of Reliability, or STAR, report. There were also edits to acknowledge the impacts of new large loads entering the grid. We provided information on the current commission rules and regulations that are in place to mitigate adverse impacts to consumers, and that we have a need for ongoing evaluation of our existing processes that are designed to ensure large loads bear their fair share of responsibility for the cost they are causing on the system, and that we should consider changes to policies if necessary to make sure that ratepayers are protected. And lastly, on this slide, there were also edits made to address the need to carefully manage the fossil fuel generation portfolio, and to be strategic about the pace of combustion unit retirements and/or replacements as we work towards our clean energy goals in order to meet reliability needs and to make sure that the system operates as cost-effectively as possible. Next slide, please. Edits were also made to the chapter to update progress to date on clean energy targets and to discuss some of the other factors that are impacting progress, including, for example, the federal government's indefinite pause on new permits for offshore wind projects and modifications to available tax credits for renewable energy technologies. Given that permitting, siting, and interconnection were key themes throughout the public comments, edits were made to add detail on the most recent revised rulemaking for the draft Rapid Act regulations by the Office of Renewable Energy Siting and Electric Transmission, and to add additional actions that the state has already taken or are underway to further streamline interconnection and permitting processes for both large-scale and distributed energy resources. Edits were also made to the chapter to add more detail on how distributed energy resources, flexible resources, and demand response can provide significant benefits to the electric grid and deliver savings to consumers. More detail was added on the benefits of co-locating solar and storage projects. In additional language was added to note that the Public Service Commission's actions provided funding for progress above the 10-gigawatt distributed solar target, specifically focused on benefits to low- and moderate-income consumers. We also highlighted actions in 2025 to launch the bulk and retail energy storage solicitations and highlight the potential for current or new flexibility programs, like vehicle-to-grid and managed-charging programs for customers that adopt electric vehicle technologies. Lastly, there is a greater emphasis placed on how flexibility and demand response should be essential components of New York's strategy for managing the electric grid and maximizing the efficiency of current and future infrastructure investments. And that's it.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chair Harris and members of the board. We received comments on a diverse... Next slide, please. Let's go to nuclear. Thank you. We received comments from a diverse set of stakeholders on the nuclear chapter, representing several constituencies, including labor, tribes, elected officials, developers, trade groups, environmental advocacy organizations, and chambers of commerce. Generally, the comments reflected the views of proponents and opponents regarding both the existing nuclear fleet and the potential expansion of new advanced nuclear. Proponents highlighted the strengths of existing nuclear facilities and identified opportunities for new advanced nuclear, including that nuclear is a firm, zero-emission resource with potential to support economic development. Proponents also signaled support for an extension of the Public Service Commission's Zero Emission Credit Program, or ZEC, program. The Governor's Directive to the New York Power Authority to develop at least one gigawatt of advanced nuclear, expedited siting and construction of new facilities, new programs to attract private investment and partnership opportunities with the federal government. Some commenter suggested sites and use cases for new nuclear, and commenters emphasized the importance of community readiness and local support, as well as job opportunities in the nuclear industry. Next slide, please. So nuclear opponents also raised concerns around both existing and new nuclear development. These concerns range from long-term waste storage and disposal, plant worker safety and community safety, water use and lifecycle emissions. Some commenters expressed concern around a legacy of harm to Indigenous communities over the lifecycle of nuclear energy. Commenters raised concerns over long development timelines of new nuclear and the costs and risks to affordability and the CLCPA's target for a zero-emission statewide electrical demand system by 2040. Commenters also expressed concerns around the viability of advanced nuclear technology, including small nuclear modular reactors, and some commenters opposed the extension of the Zero Emission Credit Program, recommending the development of a retirement roadmap and further investments in renewable energy. Next slide, please. So this slide identifies the staff recommendations to the draft nuclear chapter, which include incorporation of recent information related to consideration of the ZEC program extension proposal, which is inclusive of the Department of Public Service staff proposal on the topic, and the commission's adoption of a draft supplemental generic environmental impact statement. To incorporate findings of the Zero by Forty techno-economic assessment, which found that nuclear can contribute to zero-emission capacity and grid services to support a decarbonized grid, while recognizing deployment challenges around long lead times and uncertain costs. And to incorporate the results of the updated pathways modeling, which reflects the one-gigawatt NIPO directive and allows additional new nuclear within build limits by 2040. And as we note here, the ongoing advanced nuclear master plan process will consider the range of issues raised by the commenters as well. Thank you.
Hello. Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to share themes from stakeholder comments regarding the natural gas sector. Next slide, please. Okay. So many comments were received regarding natural gas, and as I'll discuss, stakeholder perspectives on natural gas issues differed widely, but I'll open with an area of broad agreement. The gas will remain an important fuel through 2040, and the gas consumption is expected to decline by 2040. That said, while some stress the importance of gas for reliability and affordability and support investment in new gas supply infrastructure, others call for a faster transition from gas and oppose investment in new gas supply infrastructure. Many commenters support enhanced integrated energy planning and non-pipe alternative deployment as strategies to ensure a holistic approach to New York's energy system. And some stakeholders call for gas-sector-specific greenhouse gas emission limits as needed to guide state action and utility planning. With regard to the state's framework for gas system planning, stakeholders shared perspectives on the gas system transition plan that was proposed in the draft state energy plan. Some saw the proposed transition plan as duplicative to the existing gas-long-term planning process, and others argued for using the proposed transition plan as a venue to resolve outstanding questions related to topics like utility-specific targets, areas for decommissioning, and the roles of hybrid heating, renewable natural gas, and pipe repair and relining. Next slide, please. Great. Shifting to some more specific topics. Shifting to some more specific topics. First, on reliability standards, some argued that there is a need to develop extreme weather readiness standards for gas pipelines, including for extreme cold. On alternative fuels, there were a range of perspectives, some calling for a larger role, others arguing that alternative fuels should only have a limited role for difficult-to-electrify customers. Stakeholders generally agreed that New York should prioritize the use of in-state waste-based feedstocks for alternative fuel development. With regard to hydrogen, there was strong opposition to hydrogen blending in the gas system, consistent with the draft recommended approach to hydrogen, though a limited set of stakeholders argued for pursuing hydrogen blending as an option. Also, some stakeholders supported certified gas, which is gas supply products that claim to have lower upstream methane emissions as a promising emission reduction strategy. Stakeholders also commented on legislative action. Some support the All Electric Buildings Act and legislation regarding the 100-foot rule and the obligation to serve gas, while others oppose or urge delayed implementation of these actions. The last theme relates to workforce impacts. Some voiced concern about negative job impacts, and others emphasized economic opportunity for gas-sector workers associated with geothermal and thermal energy network development. Next slide, please. I'll now cover staff recommendations regarding the gas chapter for the final state energy plan. First, we recommend continuing to advance gas system planning within the state's existing gas-long-term planning framework led by the Public Service Commission. This is to be responsive to stakeholder feedback that the proposed gas system transition plan may be duplicative. And in addition, as we enter the second cycle of gas-long-term plans, we recommend that the state refine the existing long-term planning process to reflect agency and stakeholder input. Second, we recommend that the state energy plan direct utilities to continue to evaluate supply risks, including whether utility planning practices ensure reliability without imposing unnecessary costs on ratepayers. We note that reliability risks differ regionally, and that utilities must account for risks that are particular to their supply portfolios. For instance, downstate -- the downstate area is currently supply-constrained and depends on peaking supplies that carry operational risk, like compressed natural gas trucking, or contractual risk, like peaking service contracts that utilities are not guaranteed to be able to renew when the contracts expire. In evaluating reliability, utilities should address how they define their design date conditions based on the best available climate science and customer usage data, and should address how they plan for potential supply disruptions or contingency risk. Finally, we recommend adding context regarding New York's ongoing evaluation of certified gas products -- gas supply products. The Public Service Commission has approved limited certified gas procurement pilots at multiple utilities in the state, and this will position New York to assess these products and, if warranted, develop corresponding gas supply procurement standards. I'll close by noting that the Low Carbon Alternative Fuels Chapter provides a framework for the consideration of the use of alternative fuels. On to you, Leslie.
Thank you, Seth. Next slide, please. So thank you, Chair Harris and members of the board, for the opportunity to be here today. As we heard earlier, many comments touched upon the need to support energy affordability and access to clean energy upgrades for more New Yorkers. With respect to the building sector, we frequently received comments supporting public incentives and low-cost financing offerings for building energy upgrades, with a particular focus on benefits that reach low- and moderate-income households. Specifically, many commenters urged increased funding for Empower Plus, the green affordable pre-electrification program, and for utility bill assistance programs. Relatedly, commenters highlighted the need to protect tenants from additional energy cost burdens and displacement risk, with some commenters recommending that energy efficiency and building electrification incentive programs include conditions for affordability, anti-displacement, and tenant engagement in rental buildings. Some comments also encouraged that the state ensure funding and program offerings support the unique energy and capital planning needs faced by large buildings, such as multifamily, commercial, and hospital buildings. Additionally, commenters encouraged consideration of various electric rate design options aimed at supporting energy affordability and equitable electrification. Some examples of these that commenters noted included expanded time-of-use rates, seasonal electric heating rates, and income-based rate designs. A second theme among commenters was support for technologies and buildings that can help enable electric grid flexibility, including smart thermostats, grid-responsive appliances, and behind-the-meter energy storage. Commenters encouraged the state to support opportunities to increase adoption and participation of these resources, given the role they can play in supporting both customer decarbonization and power system reliability. Next slide, please. The next couple themes relate to some of the infrastructure delivering energy to buildings. Many comments were in favor of advancing thermal energy networks in New York. This included support for actions such as continuing to develop regulatory frameworks for such networks and conducting further analysis and planning. Commenters also urged that the state continue to engage a wide range of community, industry, and labor stakeholders in these processes. Some commenters also urged the plan to include more attention to the role of district steam, and in particular, the Con Edison Steam System in New York, and address the importance of decarbonizing steam systems. The final set of comment themes surrounds building decarbonization policy actions. Many comments spoke to the zero-emission requirements in the new building and energy codes that were adopted by the Code Council this past July, with mixed reactions expressed overall. Commenters that opposed these requirements cited concerns regarding potential cost impacts and limitations on consumer choice, whereas commenters supporting these requirements urged timely implementation and suggested incentives to help support all-electric new construction. Lastly, a number of commenters also called for more expansive policy requirements to accelerate building decarbonization, including energy benchmarking requirements, building performance standards, and requirements to phase out fossil fuel equipment in existing buildings. As we move to the next slide, I will now turn to staff's recommendations on revisions for the final plan, considering these comments. First, staff recommend that the plan maintain its emphasis on ways that the state can support low- and moderate-income households in making energy upgrades that reduce energy costs and improve interior comfort for building occupants. Staff also recommends that the plan expand its discussion of tenant protections and affordability considerations. Staff recommends several other areas identified by commenters be expanded upon as well, including discussion of support for technologies that enable flexible building loads and considerations for advancing thermal energy networks, including opportunities for waste heat recovery and ensuring stakeholder engagement. Additionally, staff recommend adding a new subsection within the chapter that discusses the role of district steam, as well as recommendations to advance decarbonization of steam production processes. Finally, with respect to further policy actions, staff note that the chapter's outlook section, as well as the plan summary for policymakers, currently identifies the various potential policies noted by commenters and recognizes the need to continue evaluating the costs, benefits, implications, and potential design options of these different policies. So that concludes the summary of comments on buildings topics, and before I turn it over to Carl, I'd like to once again thank all those who submitted feedback on this area. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you all for those great and succinct presentations. So as promised, I'll cover three more topics, the first on energy jobs, second on the pathways analysis, and then finally on the process itself. So on energy jobs, we heard broad support for the plan's emphasis on job quality, partnered with calls for the state to broaden labor standards across all energy sectors, especially for projects that receive public subsidies. Some comments expressed concerns about gaps in job quality between clean energy jobs and other energy jobs. Commenters emphasized the importance of equitable workforce development and urged the state to invest in improved access to clean energy training programs and jobs, expand wraparound and retention services, and greater collaboration with community-based organizations. Commenters also identified areas that would benefit from further collaboration with labor, community-based organizations, and disadvantaged communities on topics including neighborhood-scale residential decarbonization and clean energy project and jobs data. Next slide. With these comments in mind, staff recommended maintaining the plan's emphasis on job quality and equitable workforce development programs. The plan identifies labor standards as a key tool and recommends further research on their application across sectors. The plan also recommends continued state support for workforce development programs with an emphasis on equitable access, including through the provision of supported services. Related to cross-sectoral collaboration, the plan addresses the importance of soliciting input from impacted workers, community-based organizations, and disadvantaged communities, and staff recommends adding details on areas for further research and collaboration, such as opportunities to aggregate energy projects. The plan also recommends further study on tracking of representation and retention of individuals from disadvantaged communities in state-supported workforce development programs. Next slide. So now turning to the overall process and our analytic framework, the final two topics, and then we'll wrap up and have some more questions. We received requests for an extension to the public comment period, as well as for additional public hearings. Relatedly, we heard some critique of the degree to which we engage certain stakeholders, such as disadvantaged communities, indigenous nations, local governments, and New Yorkers who live in rural areas, and more generally, those who live far from the in-person public hearings. We also heard a range of requests for additional analysis, notably on the cost of the transition, risks affecting this transition, affordability for households and businesses, and health impacts. And we heard some requests to better integrate content on cross-sector topics such as workforce impacts and equity. Next slide. I mentioned certain comments already related to the pathways analysis that was conducted to inform the draft plan. I'll now share a more complete summary. Commenters pointed to the importance of using up-to-date input assumptions in scenario modeling, in particular, for cost assumptions, and to incorporate the impact of shifts in federal policy. In considering state policy, there were calls to incorporate the 1-gigawatt of nuclear capacity that NIPA is directed to develop. Commenters also focused on clean firm capacity in the power sector modeling. Some commenters shared concern about the reliance on green hydrogen to meet clean firm needs. There also were suggestions to consider advanced nuclear for these needs. Other commenters voiced support for an approach that would incorporate greater use of gas, including for clean firm generation. Rounding out with some other technology-specific comments, there were calls to model greater build-out of distributed solar energy and to review certain underlying assumptions around this resource. For offshore wind, commenters flagged federal permitting and other development risks to building new capacity. Next slide. So with regard to our recommendations, with these comments in mind, staff recommend adding a section to the plan that describes the public engagement that occurred to inform the scope of the planning process, the draft plan itself, and the forthcoming final plan. Staff also recommend considering input shared during the draft plan public engagement, including input on our process for the biannual plan update. We also recommend that the State Energy Planning Board prioritize topical areas for follow-up analysis, policy evaluation, and engagement to inform this biannual update. And just to provide a little context here, the State Energy Planning Board is required to prepare biannual reports every second year following the issuance of a final state energy plan that discusses the ability of the state and private markets to implement the policies, programs, and other recommendations in the plan, and recommend new or amended policies as needed. Turning now to the pathways analysis, staff are hard at work updating this analysis for the final energy plan. A full briefing on the modeling updates and scenario results will be provided at the next meeting of the State Energy Planning Board. Updates include incorporation of the latest available data. This includes data on historic and projected adoption of energy efficiency and electrification technologies, and technology costs based on a recent updated renewable supply curve and the aforementioned Zero by Forty techno-economic assessment for clean firm technologies. Modeling will incorporate the impacts of HR1 and other federal policy changes in both core cases, and will also explore some new sensitivities. Scenarios will incorporate at least 1-gigawatt of new nuclear capacity and allow for additional new nuclear as a candidate resource. Finally, the team developed and will report back on sensitivities to assess the use of renewable natural gas as an alternative to green hydrogen for firm power generation. So with that, this concludes our summary of the public comments in the draft state energy plan. As I mentioned upfront, this presentation and its appendix, which includes comments for each planned chapter, will be posted after this meeting. So I do want to emphasize that there's additional material for each of the topics and each of the chapters. And before I turn back to the board to see if you have any comments or questions, I do want to thank the staff on the panel and the many staff who worked very hard this past month on the 15,000 comments. I think they've done an amazing job at pulling this all together, I hope in a coherent way. So with that, Chair Harris, back to you and to any board members who may have any comments or questions.
Well, thank you, Carl, and thank you. I would second my thanks to the staff. It's an extraordinary effort in a very short period of time to both summarize and respond to that volume of comments. So thank you very much to all, and especially today's speakers, for making your way through those -- that series of comments as we seek to finalize this plan. May I ask if any members of the board have questions for our speakers or others?
I'd also like to echo the appreciation for the quality work that went into all of this analysis. It takes a great deal of time, both to complete the analysis and also review the comments. One of the areas that jumped out at me in the review of the points received and the recommendations is that every point has a counterpoint, and that is what's so challenging about pulling together the state energy plan, is there is a great diversity in perspectives on how we move forward. I'd like to place some emphasis on one of your final slides, Carl, with respect to the recommendation to reflect the current data and current analysis to guide where we need to go forward. I think that the plan absolutely needs to reflect the aspiration that we have in New York State, but it also needs to reflect the reality of what we need to manage in the near term as a bridge to that longer-term future, and make sure that in meeting these different points and counterpoints, we're striking the right balance. I know that is what everyone is trying to do, that we have a reliable, affordable, and clean grid, and those trade-offs right now are particularly acute. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Emily, for that. And I will also emphasize, you know, we definitely saw a diverse set of views. It was also interesting to me to take note of those areas where we saw some consensus. So clearly, energy affordability is on people's minds, kind of the needs to invest in the grid came from all sectors of the economy. So there were some of those through lines that I think our draft did a pretty good job of raising up.
Yeah, I'd also say, from that perspective, Emily, thank you. This is very much why continuous planning is part of our work collectively, given uncertainties, changes, and evolutions of markets. It certainly is the case that we'll all be together sooner than later, and the processes that are reflected here on this board will also be evolving in that time, too. Ms. Lefton?
Thank you, and thank you so much to the NICE RDA and Department of Public Service teams for the really wonderful presentation. You know, there's a lot to unpack in these comments. You gave us a lot of information in a really condensed period of time, which was remarkable in some ways, but I think I'll probably reflect more. I guess as I sit here today, and even just reflecting on what Chair Harris just said, so much has changed since we first went down this road and the draft energy plan was really first being constructed, and it's a reflection that we are going to be in really an ever-changing landscape. And so I suppose the challenge for all of us is how do we continuously keep our eyes on the prize of affordability, as well as transitioning to clean renewable zero-emission energy, and keep those goals front of mind for us as we continue to navigate an ever-changing landscape? And that's really a rhetorical question, not asking us to answer it, but I think it's inherently the challenge in front of us, because we should never lose sight of the importance of those things while we also need to continue to meet the needs of New Yorkers. So just great summary, and appreciate that.
Yeah, wonderful, thank you. And I think what you touch upon, which I've been thinking about as well, is we have hundreds of recommendations, and we have clearly areas for further research, and I think it'll be good for the board to reflect, and we'll help you with this. Are there some key areas that we can focus on in the next year and a half as we look towards that biannual update? Because we have to kind of cut through the noise and figure out what are the key research topics that we need to continue to get smarter on.
Hi. Thank you again to staff for the presentations and also all of the work. 15,000 comments is a lot. Fifteen thousand comments is a lot. And, you know, we worked really hard, too, in our district in sharing with the assembly members' colleagues about this process going on. So really appreciate everyone who did submit a comment. Just to the point of, I guess, diversity in viewpoints, and I'm not sure if this was tracked with written comments, but is there, did you see patterns across the state or in different areas of the state having one viewpoint over the other? I'm just thinking in terms of like our district, right? Or if we have other assembly members that reach out, was there a breakdown in that at all, or was it not collected?
Yeah, so we don't publish any individual's addresses to protect them. Not everyone did give their address. You know, we made sure kind of what state they were from, hopefully New York, so we can make comments about that. We did, I think the hearings in some ways, though, gave us insight into some of the regional differences, I think we did hear. And we can certainly help any of the, for example, upstate folks who want to hear like what was said in the Rochester area versus other areas, Albany area. So we can certainly comment on what we heard at those hearings, which may give some of those insights. And there were differences, certainly. Yeah.
Carl, might I ask you, as you had indicated, our next meeting really will review updates to our modeling.
Yes.
So in part, some of these comments would indicate, is it fair to assume that some of the comments that have been received will be reflected in the modeling? And how will we, as board members, know which sort of match to comments? Can you speak to that, please?
Yeah, so I did try to highlight at a very quick and high level some of the analytic work that received more comment, for example, nuclear energy. And so we will be specifically responding to those comments and adding that as a new option for advanced nuclear. We're also exploring, as you, as we had promised, looking at some of the federal impacts. And there was kind of wide spectrum asks of us to look at what might be the impacts of some of these federal challenges that we've been seeing, and not just at a high level of, you know, how do we march towards new market options, but also specifically on what are the consumer impacts? How much more are New Yorkers going to have to pay for the energy system because of these rollbacks? So those are specifically an answer to questions. So yeah, we will spend over an hour, so thank you for your time in advance, walking you through some of that analytic work next month. And we'll highlight for you some of the specific areas where we saw state interest in certain topics and how we've shifted our either key assumption or broadened our analytic overall framework. We also did hear from normal people on just, there's a lot of uncertainty, you know, whether it be nuclear, the timing and scale of nuclear. We also highlighted here, there was some questioning around like how large a role can green hydrogen play? So we do want to specifically address those questions in sensitivities. And we're only going to have so much time, and so we do hope to answer some of those key questions. And then again, it creates an agenda for us going into next year of what additional work we can do.
Thank you. From my perspective, it would be fantastic if at our next meeting, the changes, if you will, could be sort of matched to the comments received. For example, you had indicated some would indicate a change in the assumptions for distributed solar. I'd be interested to know what those are as an example.
Absolutely. Yep.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the board?
Okay, with that, I thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. I will now ask if the members have any other business to bring before the board. Hearing none, I'll move to our final slide. As you have learned, we are nearing the final stages of the development of the state energy plan. In terms of next steps, as we have already discussed, the board will meet again in December to further discuss the development of the state energy plan. That meeting will focus on the updates to the modeling, as we have discussed today, and the specific ways in which the modeling has been updated, both based on the comments received, as well as the changing landscape even within the past year for our state and for our energy system's future. In the meantime, board members and their staff will continue to refine the plan based on the comments received. Again, our aim is to finalize this plan by the end of 2025. So we look forward to your continued engagement over the coming month or two as we seek to achieve that outcome. So thank you again for your time. Thank you to the staff, and I really do look forward to further discussion at our next meeting. Last slide, please. Certainly, just a reminder, not only with my thanks for your participation in this meeting, but also a reminder to please visit the website to sign up not only for ongoing email updates, but for materials available to the public with respect to our progress, the work we've discussed, and the ongoing finalization of the plan. So with that, this meeting of the State Energy Planning Board is hereby adjourned. Thank you all.